Please rise and salute the flag.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the honor of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Martino, could you do a roll call vote, please? I mean, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mrs. Bytes?
Here.
Mr. Doty? Mr. Kurtz? Here. Mr. Martino here. Mr. Otis O'Neal? Here. Mr. Rathke? Here. Mr. Scott? Here. Mr. Radowski? Seven people present.
You didn't say me.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Go, seven people present.
Okay. Under announcements, there will be an executive session after the committee at the whole to discuss negotiation and personnel issues. We do have several agenda edits. The first, under number eight, A-8A-8EE, letter A, motion to approve the attached course and credit request for tuition reimbursement was revised. What was the revision?
The attachment was revised.
Okay.
Two people were added.
Two people were added, okay. And letter D, under that same motion, we're removing that?
Yeah.
That is, the motion to approve agreement with people admin in court?
Hold on one second.
All right.
We're removing D?
We're removing D. And under fifteen, new business, we're going to, motion to accept the resignation of school board member Brian Doty effective March 1st of 2016. Is there any other agenda edits?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Wolf. The policy can, excuse me, the clearness of discretion for the meeting before a voting meeting, and we have recommendations to bring to the full board, would you prefer us, for me to bring them at this meeting or the meeting next month?
Mind you, if you have one that you want to bring, we'll bring it under new business.
Okay, and for new business, I have the anyone who areas school district employee of the month shining apple award?
As E?
Move to E, yes.
Well, I have a concern for that, and that we're not really given the public a chance to weigh in and then act it quickly. Can we get those on the floor?
Well, if it's, I sat in during the presentation, I think it was, it's a very nice gesture to honor the, a teacher. I don't think there's going to be, in this case, in this particular case, appoints a contention.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be compromised or transparency or accountability too.
Yeah, something that will require more discussion, and then we can, that's something that Mr. Kurtz and myself, and Mr. Martino can discuss when we do the agenda.
Is this for a motion to approve, or is it just discussion?
Yeah, this is a motion to approve the shining apple award?
Yes.
Okay. Procedures for public participation are listed in the inside of your agenda. At the appropriate time, please make sure you sign in at the podium, and sign in, if you haven't, in the back of the room. You'll have three minutes to address the board on the, whatever the item is that you want to address. Also, for some of you who haven't been here, we are putting the attachments online, as well as in the back of the room, there's a binder back there with the attachments and hard copy for your viewing. Having said that, is there any presentations by the public on agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll move to recognition for February.
Okay, is there a Justin Frye here? Come on down.
There's going to be pictures taken.
So, Justin is an Eagle Scout from troop 597, and he did a project. What's your project? Come to the, go to the podium, please. I can't see my glasses.
You can just push the button, Justin.
Um, I, sorry.
Try, hit a turn red.
Just tap it. Just bang.
No, I would say it doesn't work.
He's an Eagle Scout, he can fix it.
I don't need it.
He doesn't need it.
I can talk to him.
Yeah, he's good.
For my Eagle project, I built a labyrinth at my, at my father's church. Oh, he's a pastor. And we built a labyrinth garden out of bricks and stones, and I had about 20 people, and it took only four hours, so.
All right.
Justin, yeah, we're going to take a picture.
See, when you get old, you take them on and take them off. Next person, honorable mention, the Fastlane Art Competition, Michaela Flanagan. Are you here? Come on down. Always want to say that. The Berks County, the Berks Arts Council sponsors Fastlane Art. It's an art competition for professional and student artists, and if their work is chosen, they have their work shown on a billboard. So if you're driving down Route 422 East, just past Lancaster Avenue this week, you will see Michaela's art up on the billboard, bulletin board. It is, what is it, Three Cups?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Three Cups, it's called Three Cups. So can you tell us about it? Please.
Um, three are three, um, random pieces I made on a wheel. Um, my three cups are three random pieces I made on a wheel, and were wired and glued to my heel.
How long did it take you to make each cup?
Um, it took me about 20 minutes.
Each one?
Well, to throw them, and then it took time to dry, and then time to fire.
Wow, they were really pretty, I saw them.
While you were testing. Okay, so, we have something for you, welcome. Okay, also wanted to acknowledge Cheryl Barra. Barra, are you, I guess you're here. Come on down. Cheryl has been the guidance secretary at BEC for nine years, and she's now retiring. So.
Yay.
Wanted to thank you for your service.
I just want to thank Mrs. Hefter and Mrs. McCowsky for my interview. I never did learn the spreadsheet, Shelley, I'm sorry. But thank you for the opportunity to work with yours. I've met a lot of nice people, and some not too nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing great for tonight.
Okay, last but not least, the Daniel Boone Sports Booster Club, come on down.
I think they're over there. Yes, they are.
There's one, no.
There's four.
There's four. Five's three. Okay, so, take them off again. We would like to thank the Daniel Boone Sports Boosters for their donation of, how much?
Drum roll, $33,000.
Before you do the check presentation, can you tell us a little bit about, first of all, how you found the grant, and how much, you know, what you had to do to, in writing the grant?
Sure. Actually, it always takes a village to make something happen. Without the women behind me and supporting me, it would not have happened, first of all. Probably about four years ago, I had a conversation with our old AD, and I took a tour of the school, and was dumbfounded at the condition of the, some of the equipment, and while I was there, one of the students sprained their leg as he got off the piece of equipment, because the bolt was sticking out. And I knew then that we had to do something. We all agreed that we were going to search around and try to find some money, and this is kind of an unprecedented grant, because of the amount, and because of how our budget is based, but they took a chance on us, and we're going to make it work. But as I said, it takes a village. So I wanted to publicly thank a couple of people. Sandy, you've been my go-to girl. I didn't know where to go, I call you, and I find out. Jolene, Jolene Doyle, as well, my little notes, I didn't forget. And Michael Miller. At the 13th hour, I got a call from the foundation, and they wanted some information. I didn't have that information. I called these two people up, and within an hour, I had it. I also wanted to thank Bob the trainer, and George, who's been fantastic, and also Coach Parks. Anytime I needed information, anytime I needed to get into the room, they were there, they helped me make assessments of the equipment. And I also wanted to thank Preston McKnight, and also Casey. From the get-go, they've had, you know, a great attitude about it, they never once said no, and if something wouldn't work, we found alternatives. So without these eight people, and these terrific women standing behind me, this would not happen. And I surely hope that this is the first among many grants that we are able to give you, because we're not stopping at this, we're still going to try to find some more. So thank you very much, and who wants the checks?
We want a picture, yeah. We got the photo up. For the record, can we have all the names of the fine women here, and your name, please?
Oh, I apologize. My name is Jennifer Demille.
Kelly Hefner.
Michelle Miller.
Laurel Riel.
Thank you, ladies. All together.
All right, how do you want to do it? All right, I'll move forward. This is out of hand. We want to let this picture.
This is them.
We wanted to make a big check. We're saving money and making it a little check. Yes. All right, you guys do something with the check. How much should I pay?
Check hand, check.
Good job, perfect. You're my buddy.
Yes, again, thanks very much. We felt it deserved a little bit more pomp and circumstance than just a mention on the agenda and a handshake, and a, you know, clap, so, thank you. Hope we didn't embarrass you too much.
They can go if they want.
If you want to leave for your bingo, you won't hurt our feelings. Okay.
He's still making the cover all.
If anybody would like to leave, you're not going to hurt our feelings either, so, if you want to stay, you're more, you know, more than welcome to stay, but if you'd like to go...
This is your chance, kid.
Okay, you're in for the long haul.
No.
All right. The next item is the consent items. Is there any items that a board member would wish to have taken off the consent agenda? Beyond D, which is being stricken? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion for any of those items. Actually, it says a consent agenda, so we are just going to do a vote.
I'll make a motion for A through double E, as amended, and striking D.
Second.
I think I got that, I think I got that right.
Yes. Your second? Any discussion?
Just a point of discussion, for the date of absences, that is an emotion, is, we were going to start listing some basic reasons, weren't we?
No. We men. With benefits or without benefits, and if it's paid or unpaid, you cannot...
No reason, the word is safe.
Nope.
I have a question, before I, I don't, I don't fully, for the BCI, I didn't, the project said we need to have two votes.
Yes, we'll vote the majority on the list.
No other comment?
Just one. I didn't realize it was in the consent agenda, I thought it was a separate item, but, Mr. Hurley, did you want to mention the at-risk kindergarten program? What we're actually doing with it, please?
Yeah, the at-risk kindergarten, there are two sections that are in there, and we're going to place the students, in terms of where their sections are. By our need, we're going to wait until the kids are actually tested in May, and then we're going to determine which building those, if we're going to put those sections, for example, if most at-risk kids end up closer to the monoplicity area, we'll put them over there. If it ends up being split up between the two buildings, we'll put them there. Otherwise, you're going to see it as, it was in this binder here that you guys had. Mr. Otis O'Neal asked me a question earlier, and as we measure, this is perfectly clear, this is a four-year pilot program, and every year we offer at-risk kindergarten. It's not just the first year, and then it goes dormant for three years until we reevaluate, it is going to be every year. I don't think that was clear, because it wasn't in the union, apparently.
Mr. Kurtz, yes, that's the way, when we first started talking about this, it'll be held every year for four years, but at the end of the fourth year, it'll be assessed to see whether it's continued.
And it will be re-approved, or we have to confirm it, or whatever, at the end of those four years?
That's right.
Wasn't there a dollar figure, something attributed to that program?
Under the purple tab in the binder, the projected expenditures, including teacher salaries and benefits, it ends up being, plus the training, everyone above, it's approximately $103,000.
Each year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do a voice vote, please.
On the consent agenda, excuse me, consent agenda items 8A through 8EE, less item D, motion made by Mr. Rathke, second by Mr. Kurtz, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven zero.
Okay.
I'd like to thank, you know, the common teachers that were part of that, as well as administration, that got that at-risk kindergarten, kind of to the forefront, and along with Mr. Kurtz, being a chair of the committee, and Mr. Martino, who was one of the driving forces behind getting that, getting that going. I think it's a great program, well overdue, and hopefully we'll see great results from that, so.
We'll see in four years. Hopefully. Well, actually, you'll probably see results a little bit before that, but we'll know which direction it's going.
Thank you, and one of the teachers, Mrs. Murgatroyd, stand up, let people see you. Mrs. Liederman, Mrs. Liederman, her partner in putting this all together, her son's birthday's today, so she chose to be with her son, as you would expect. So, thank you both.
Okay, we need a second vote for item EE on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Is it proper to vote for ways in the same night? Do we have to?
No, no, you can vote, it's just that the requirement is, one applies to the majority participating boards or constituent boards, and then one deals with the majority of the board members.
So this will be an individual roll call vote for this? Is there any discussion?
The motion was by Mr. Kurtz, I believe?
Who, no second?
Second.
Mr. Otis O'Neal?
O'Neal.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Doty's not here. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Otis O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Radowski's not here. Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Okay, the next item is building and grounds. Like I said, just as an announcement, that Mr. Jim Thompson, facilities, community presentation will be this Thursday at 6:00 in the high school cafeteria. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, moving along to number 10, do I have a motion for any of the financial approvals?
Some of. Second.
First by Mr. Rathke, second by Mr. Kurtz. Discussion?
Shall I assume that these target ones are the, like, the receipt things, or is that how that works?
Okay, any other?
I have a question.
Okay.
How do we adjust these, these accounts? Is that, are they run by our business office? One gun and the student activities, AE special revenue account, and the AE special revenue account, are they managed by our business office?
They are at the building level, but ultimately, disbursements and receiving is done at the business office level.
So you have oversight on all the spending?
Yes.
And all those, all those checks that are written, you get to see on the monthly basis on those, and Mr. Small sent out his list of disclosures, is actually a separate, a separate sheet for all of these?
And is it tied to it? Does it actually say to charge of education?
Well, that would be for the checks written, I don't know about the, I don't think we see the, we don't actually see the donations going, we see the checks being written.
Just wondering, yeah, the accountability of, like, what will that 1667 be set, then for? Is there some sort of monitoring on that?
We could certainly create a expenditure dispersment report on any of these, if the board desires to have it included. Like Mr. Rathke said, you see it as a check, as far as specific details in each of these accounts, you typically see that, but we could certainly provide.
Does the business office oversee the expenses as they're tested?
That's done at the building level.
Of business?
Any of these special revenue accounts, they're managed at the building level.
Okay, maybe I just don't understand the process of it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, a voice call vote?
Voice?
Mm-hmm.
Item 10A, the financial approvals, the three donations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven zero.
Next is 11, personal approvals, pending all required paperwork. Do I have a motion for any of the items?
Motion for item 11A through C.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Rathke. Any board discussion? Hearing none, a voice call vote there, Mr. Martino?
Items 11A through C, personnel approvals, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Get to number 12, programs.
Number 12, A.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Otis O'Neal. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a voice call vote, Mr. Martino?
Item 12, programs, the motion to approve revised agreement with Karen Foundation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven zero.
13, the first, these are just, these are just first readings, so we're not looking for a motion for any of those items. Okay, under old business, the action, action list, is there any, any comments on those? At-risk kindergarten locations still to be determined?
Let me say about the public budget presentation, we were going to do it at the committee at the whole in March, but because of the conflict with the middle school, probably, I believe it is, we're going to do it at the voting meeting in March at the middle school.
Part of the comment about that is, I mean, until we actually see something in the state, I mean, does it really make any sense to...
Yes and no. No, in that, until the state, it's amazing, we're into eight months now without a budget for this year, and we're talking about next year's budget, but at the same time, traditionally, we've done a preliminary budget presentation to the public, so they see where we stand at the moment, and nothing will be finalized until June, and hopefully, we have some numbers in June. The indications I have is that nothing's going to be done in the state until after the April 26th primary.
May I even request that we invite Mr. presentation, if we have one, the governor himself and the members of the person, legislative delegation, so they can see just what we're struggling with, and how their reaction has impacted our legislature? We'll be interested to see who shows up.
It's more than tradition, too, you know, aren't we filing our state required filing date to file budgets, preliminary budgets, right?
That's filed.
Yeah, we did, that's...
Right, so the presentation...
We filed our...
Is going, right, so that's the point I'm trying to make.
Right, it's normally, it's, this is unusual business cycle for, for me, of all the years I've been on the board, in that, here we are, talking about the next year's budget, and we don't even have the money for the present budget. I think we're, what, 45% funded, something like that? So...
But that's what the presentation is on, actually, we're filing, we're official filing most of the time.
Yeah, we...
In, in May, in May, we do have to advertise a window of public, we adopted the preliminary in January, but in May, we would advertise...
Proposed final.
A proposed final, 30-day window of review, final adoption by June 30th. So, could be similar to what we have, could be totally different, obviously, preliminary is what it is, but in the meantime, with the primary, this was the primary date, 26th, it's going to be, but there's 500 school districts across the state that are in the same, same predicament, but one of the big things, if you're following what was going on in Harrisburg today, the budget...
on in Harrisburg today, the budget secretary himself admitted in Senate hearings that they feel that school districts will be okay through the end of March, the way we are now, but come April, they know their districts are going to be closing. That's the budget secretary speaking, so they, they don't anticipate anything soon. But we will have to, by law, have a budget by the 30th day of June, so we've got to follow the calendar.
Well, and for the new board members and for the public, we have to publish our proposed final budget by the end of May to give a 30-day window, but it can be revised in June should we get later data.
There's still a lot that we can discuss, you know, the class size recommendations and Mr. Martino had, you know, had some things, refinancing opportunities possibly we would be able to partake in this, for this budget cycle, so we still have some work that we can do, but we're, we're working with fuzzy math.
Yeah, let me just say, at the finance committee meeting next week, it's going to be a short agenda, basically, what is it, RBC Capital? Will comment and explain what opportunities we may have to refinance some stuff now. We'll be talking about any board member ideas to reduce costs and one or two other items tops. So, the bulk of the meeting will be about this RBC Capital presentation.
So it would be helpful if your schedule does permit to ask that the board members attend if possible.
What is that, next Thursday?
Next Thursday, not this week.
Okay. Any other comments on old business action items? No, there. New business, motion A is to remove Brian Doty as the career in technology center, alternative representative and appoint someone in their place. As you know, Mr. Radaski is the normal representative, so we need to send a alternate representative because they will be voting on their preliminary budget. So, it is important that we were there, we have a representative and I'll volunteer myself, because I've been on that board before, so I would be, unless somebody really would like to go to the career in technology center and discuss it, I'd be happy to serve again.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
I move to read, remove Brian Doty as the career in technology center alternate representative and appoint Mike Wolf as the career in technology center alternate representative.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Ms. Bites. The other, well, while we finish the vote on that, can I have a roll call vote? Mr. Martino?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Rathkeb?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Radaski's missing, Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Doty's missing, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Otis O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item B is a motion to remove Mr. Doty from the negotiation committee and appoint Mr. Scott to negotiation committee. Do I have a motion? Do you? Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Rathkeb. Have a roll call vote please, Mr. Martino?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Radaski's not here, Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Doty's not here, Mr. Kurtz? Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Otis O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rathkeb?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, the next item of business is the principles for governance and leadership discussion. Mr. Subers is here, it'd be a good time to discuss it and decide what we want to do and how we would do it.
I'll just get the background and because it came up in discussion in the curriculum committee or in the policy committee, there's two letters that are not to adopt, has recommendations for new policy, principles of government and leadership that basically reflects that the school board is committed to providing every student the opportunity to grow and achieve. The actions taken by the board ultimately have both short and long-term impact in the classroom, therefore, school directors collectively and individually will advocate earnestly, lead responsibly, govern effectively, plan thoughtfully, evaluate continuously and communicate clearly and ethically. The board, the committee did decide that the board was committed to all those concepts and we were divided on some of the language that was used and we decided to bump it up to the full board for discussion as more of a mission statement than actually vetting our policies and that's why it's on the agenda.
Gave my guess, the question is, what's the best way to adopt this or agree? I mean, we had talked about possibly putting in policy number 11.
Yeah, in response to Mr. Wolf's inquiry, I did do some investigation. This is an initiative that's been brought forth by PSBA. They're looking to create a uniformity of principles of governance throughout the Commonwealth in all school districts. They're requesting, they requested at their most recent annual meeting that all school board of directors consider adoption of these principles of governance as board policy 011. It's a recommendation, obviously, you're not bound by those recommendations, it's your policy if you so adopt, you're not bound by the verbiage. PSBA is pushing for boards to do this. Several boards, at this point, I don't know that anyone's, any of the 18 or so school districts that we represent have formally adopted the policy, several have it under review in their policy committees. It's up to the board whether or not you wish to adopt it as a formal policy, that you know, if it is, it's going to be memorialized with your policy, subject to your periodic policy review. It's a mission statement, your board certainly could choose to adopt this statement as a mission statement or not at all. It's really completely in your discretion.
We discussed this at the policy committee meeting, we had a tendency to discuss things that might be in the policy committee. I just would prefer I'm going to vote against it if we move it, just because there's some verbiage in there. I really think it's, it's not always as appropriate personally, it's like PSBA, I'll call it, and there's stuff that I don't necessarily agree with, that it would say that the board as a whole agrees to, and I don't have a specific language in front of me, but if there's no tea behind this policy, I don't really see the value, the value in it, but again, that's just me and I, some people disagree with it, so.
One of the, one of the wordings, if, one of the part of the communicated clearly pledge is, is honor the sanctity of executive session, that Mr. Kurtz effectively persuaded us that maybe that is strong language, you know, honor the sanctity, I think we said.
We did, the source woke up on sanctity and one of the other words was holiness and we didn't, we thought that might be a little step too far for executive session, stuff like that. Stuff like that, just going a little bit.
The confidentiality, I think we said if we would adopt it, we would change some of the language I do work, Mr. Kurtz, only that's what it is, fluffy, but, you know, I thought it was, I brought it up as a committee chair and I thought that we pretty much are operating under these principles of government and leadership. I thought it would be really good for us to make that statement in some formal fashion and I strongly recommend that the board does consider adopting it as a mission statement and at very least, and posted on the school district, on everyone now, and hold this candle for the things that we say we are.
Did your committee decide to move it forward?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, personally, I'm indifferent as to whether or not it's a policy or a mission statement, but if you think of the literal usage and meaning of policy, it doesn't seem to fit and that's why we felt it was more conceptual and something for us to operate and live by versus something that we're in some way, shape or form bound to, maybe, you know, legally or, so that's just, that's sort of what we're doing.
Well, it'd be helpful to Mrs. Bites if we arrived at a decision on which direction we want to go, if any.
And if the, if the board did want us to advance it, if you take it back to committee, you should remove the language and bring it back up for final approval, ironing out some of the.
Untrue language.
Untrue language. So I guess that's what I'm, I'm working on, I mean, I think the committee is ready. Move forward.
Okay, we'll move forward with it in policy and bring the draft forward and we'll take a look at it.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
She's very thankful. Okay. Continuing on with new business, item D is to accept the resignation of Mr. Brian Doty. He's the representative from region three, so that encompasses both precincts of Birdsborough and precinct one of Amity. So if you vote anywhere in Birdsborough or at the Monarch Fire Company, I think that's where they vote, if you would like to, we'll accept the resignation, we'll stick with the resignation for time being and we'll get on to finding a replacement. So, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Doty?
I move to accept the resignation of the school director, Brian Doty, effective March 1, 2016.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Otis O'Neal. Any other discussion?
Would you like me to read his letter?
Please.
This letter's dated February 19th, it's addressed, Dear Mrs. Kramer, why she's first, I don't know. Mr. Martino, Mr. Wolf and Mr. Harris, is with deep regret that I must inform you all of my resignation from the Daniel Boone Area School Board effective March 1, 2016. As you all may be aware, this fall, we had a baby girl and I also began a new position requiring me to travel. This has caused my absence at recent meetings and eventually we will be relocating out of the area. It would be a disservice to the community for me to continue to hold a position where I can no longer fulfill the obligations. Please understand that I appreciate the opportunity to serve, learn and express my opinions. When recalling the last two years, I can say that I am proud of the work we have done as a board to enhance the educational opportunities available in our community. We found ways to improve education, reduce costs and recruit talented individuals to work in our district. It was not easy and there is more work to be done, but I am confident in this board's ability to continue on that journey. I feel lucky to have served with each and every member of this board. I hope that the transition to find a replacement will go smoothly. If there's anything I can do to help, please do not hesitate to contact me. I will always have a special place in my heart for the Daniel Boone Area School District and I look forward to hearing about future successes. Best regards, Brian Doty.
Yes, Brian, while we continue on with the vote.
And I will say as a comment that I will miss Brian and even though he's resigning, I will vote against the motion, just because I wish he were still here.
He did tend to blow up the executive session meeting sometime with his humor.
I will, Mr. Doty's.
But he was a very effective, you know, representative for Birdsborough and, you know, he did run and decide to continue his service to the community despite his obligation to new little package that arrived, so he did decide to do that, then this opportunity came up for his job, so it was an opportunity he couldn't turn down, so we understand that and I wish him the best. Can I have a voice vote?
Item 15D, Brian Doty resignation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Motion passes six one.
Okay, the, just for the public's information, we have 30 days to replace the member, so if there's any member of the community that, as I said, from region three consisting of Birdsborough, anywhere in Birdsborough or Amity precinct one, please submit your letter of interest to Mrs. Kramer. I would also ask if we can advertise it, you know, Facebook and our webpage as well.
Just, wait, it would be 30 days from March 1st, correct?
Correct, that's how I understand it. And the process will be, the board will consider the applicants if there's more than one and then we'll name that successor and vote that person on the board.
And just, and that person would continue to serve until the first Monday following the next municipal election and that position would be up for election in the next municipal election.
So that's December of 17?
Correct.
So we can only, we can only appoint somebody for the first two years and they would have to run for reelection or appoint someone again?
No, they would be subject to election and they would serve out the remainder of Mr. Doty's term. Is he a two or?
He's a.
He's a four.
He's a four.
So they would, so the vacancy would be appointed until Monday of 2017, or December of 2017 and then the person who was elected in that municipal election would serve out the remainder of his term.
Well, Kara, how that's going to work is we're appointing somebody for just two years.
Yeah, I just thought he was over in 2017 anyway. It's over 2018.
2019. So, right, and then what would happen, he would, he or someone else would run for reelection for the remainder of the two years.
Right.
Unless somebody, unless nobody was interested and we'd have to appoint somebody again.
Will there only be one year left by December 2017?
Maybe two years.
He just started, December of 15.
19.
Sixteenth, the seventeenth, the eighteenth and the nineteenth.
He elected in 14, he got elected in 2015. He was appointed to serve.
I thought he was.
When he got elected.
He was the great diselection.
He was elected for a four-year term. Tomorrow was the two-year term.
I have it all recorded.
We all straight with our math?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Okay. Let's see, we should probably put a time limit on that, I would say by the middle of the month. What, I'm sorry.
A time limit on?
Accepting letters of interest.
Oh, I have it in an email already prepared, I was going to send it to you too.
Well, aren't you all prepared?
What's the time limit you have, Mrs. Kramer?
Well, I'm going to advertise it four times, starting this Thursday, Sunday, Thursday, Sunday, and then I believe it's right before the committee of the whole is the final day and then by the voting, you can possibly have interviews and elect.
All right, so back it up in time, what's the deadline for submissions, it would be the?
March 14th, I believe. It's not the committee of the whole?
Yes, that's the committee of the whole.
Yes, 4:00 PM on March 14th.
We go back to back as of Easter. Okay.
I have it set for.
So March 14th would be the deadline to submit any interest?
Correct.
And that should also be on, accompany on the website also?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's all set up.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving along with new business, the last item, E, motion to approve the Shining Apple Award. Mr. Kurtz, if you want to provide some additional information on that?
Sure. Should I make the motion and then we can talk about it? Should I talk about it?
Yeah, well.
Okay, I'll make the motion and then we'll talk about it. I move that we approve the Daniel Boone Area School District Employee of the Month program.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mrs. Bites.
All right. Now, this is a recommendation from the curriculum discussion committee we talked about tonight. For the past few months, we've been discussing and challenging the administration to come back with a full recognition program and we floated around a bunch of ideas and ultimately this was the proposal that Mr. Harris came up with, thank you, Mr. Harris, in coordination with some other administrators and I would like to read the description right here and if you're members of the curriculum committee, you already have. Curriculum Committee, you already have a piece of paper describing the program, but if you're not on the Curriculum Committee, you can take one. The highlights of the program are already in introduction. The Employee of the Month Award is designed to pay special tribute to outstanding employees in the Daniel Boone Area School District, where we recognize all staff members facing many challenges in their daily duties of education and promote public recognition and respect for the education profession. This program celebrates the exceptional work of positive role models who inspire all students to reach their highest academic potential and work to maximize their social and emotional development, who consistently support high expectations for learning and responsible behavior at school and within the community, who approach their duties with creativity, enthusiasm, and true appreciation for the individual differences among all students, and who cultivate a lifelong interest in learning among all students. This program is implemented with involvement of local community partners, parent organizations, Daniel Boone Area School District Foundation, and the school group. Now, the nomination process for this program is open to anybody, anybody in the community can nominate an employee, students, staff, members of the public. The process will be to go to the Daniel Boone website, and there'll be a link, and you'll just complete the application and submit it. From there, all applications or calls submissions will be reviewed by the administration, a committee put together by Mr. Harris, and the winners will be notified at the end of each month. Winner, excuse me, will be notified at the end of each month. And the winners will receive the Golden Apple Award, this is called, the program is called Shining Apple Award, and you'll be able to celebrate that by placing it, or you can choose to make your own. And at the end of the year, I hope is that we'll be able to introduce a Teacher of the Year program or Employee of the Year to go above and beyond the Shining Apple Award, really, recognize those staff members who go above and beyond the call of duty. So I think this is a great step on the faculty administration thing, that's together, and thank the Political Committee for approving it, but I think it will be a very first step.
It's a nice sediment. It's not exactly an all-expenses-paid trip to the Bahamas, but...
We have that.
You have that?
But there's no budget.
Okay. But nonetheless, it still is a, a symbol of recognition and, and, you know, pride for the person, the persons that receive it, so it is a, a nice gesture. Is there any other discussion?
Quick question. How are we defining employee? That is, I was just wondering my own mind, I know, I'll let Mr. Harris determine that. Would, for example, a lunch lady use a colloquial term that I use at an elementary school? Would they be eligible for a Shining Apple Award?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone who has our ID. Because the Shining Apple goes on the ID, so if you don't have an ID, it doesn't work.
Any other board discussion? Got a voice vote, Mr. Martino?
Motion 15E, Employee of the Month, Shining Apple Award, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
All right, before I ask for adjournment, I did want to recognize Mr. Schmidt, who's now an official employee of the district, if you would like to stand up. I'm glad you, you decided to un-retire and come back to Daniel Boone and, and very happy to have some stability in this position, as you know, it needs that. So, the sports boosters are smiling, so it must be good.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Wolf, I have a question before you go on, if I may.
Sure.
I asked this at the agenda meeting, and I told it was a pressing thing, so if I may, Mr. McKnight, to conference request, what is Leadership Flight School One?
Okay, so there's, there's a leadership school that operates out of State College in the population of Penn State that I think investing in, in all of our leadership team is critical, but specifically, I'm most concerned about the two assistant principals at the high school. So it's a leadership program that they continue to have their leadership skills developed and learn how to work in a servant leadership model.
So we're not teaching them to fly?
Well, they're going to fly.
Thank you.
No, they're never going to crap.
Okay, is there any public presentations? Do you turn that on?
Eric Kaplan, 2032 East Main Street, Otisville, Unit 11. A G one, the cap, cap tiered statement, which I didn't hear in state, but, I mean, wondering, are new, yeah, for, 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 running, subject to, subject to, Incorporated, we're about halfway in the year. What are they, what are they going to give us a debt in the year, $150,000?
What's the, what's the agreement?
The, the performance agreement was $100,000.
$100,000. Okay, we're halfway in the year, have we booked the $50,000 on that?
No, that, that'll be determined at the end of the year.
Or the guarantee is that they have at least $50,000. I don't want to get delayed until five years from now, and then, and that'll, guess what? We have to have a lawsuit now to get something from them. Or we want, I mean, know what they're doing. I haven't heard any report from them. I thought they were supposed to give us a report every month.
They did give a report last month.
That's it? Okay, I missed it, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
Hi, I'm Sharon Morris, Birds Street in Birdsborough. I just had a couple questions about the kindergarten. Connor, I believe that you did ask that if there are more kids that need it, are you going to open it up to them? I mean, if you, if you get, like, is there a cutoff number?
It's 30. 30's a cutoff number.
Okay. Do we have all the registration numbers? And I'm not trying to be mean, I'm going to cry if I look at you, but my daughter's starting kindergarten, and why I can look at Mrs. Myers and cry is because when I was pregnant with her, I volunteered in my son's classroom, who was being taught, and now she's going to teach my daughter, and basically crying, sorry. But I didn't get a registration for, for my daughter in kindergarten, and I joked with my friends, I'm like, yeah, they don't want to be bringing another kid into boom, that's why I didn't get one in the mail.
Ms. Morris, let me, let me just clarify two things that you just said. One, registration, I believe, is, is in March?
March 7?
Starts in March.
Yes.
So, so no, we don't have the registration numbers yet, obviously. And when we first discussed this with Mr. Harley, optimally, it would be no more than 15 in a class.
Okay.
If we had 31, I, I think it's possible we would make an exception to, to add that extra child.
Because with my, with my findings, when I discussed, because I really thought, oh my God, tell me till the end of February, and then I'll get my registration, then my wife and son, and they, she's like, did you get registration papers? I'm like, no. And I went online, and I saw it, I'm like, oh no, they don't want to be registered, they don't want to be bringing another kid into boom. But it turned out there was about 10 to 15 kids that did not receive the kindergarten registration papers. So it was just kind of a concern that they, from what I've learned is that there was like a weird census, like the cutoff number there, because my daughter was born in October. You're shaking, you know...
I have September names.
Right, it's, it's that weird cutoff right there, and somehow they got missed in the census, so that was just my thing. Another thing, could, wouldn't it be more cost-effective if we did online registration? Like, is that even something that we could remotely look into? I'd go out 14 forms, 14 forms for my daughter's kindergarten registrations. I feel awful for people to have to sit there and put all of that information in the computer. That's how many kids. I didn't know if there is a program that's out there. I used to work at a doctor's office, and we had the, you know, technology that you scanned it in, it went right in. I don't know if there's programs like that that are available for school districts that you can do online registration. I would hope there is, I just signed my kid up for baseball championships, so.
It's a good point. Mr. Haskins, can you just check with Mr. Matts and see?
We're looking, we're looking into certain things, for certain things...
I mean, just little things like that, so it will, it will add the paper supply.
We are, that's something we are, we are working on.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I had to delay.